Welcome y'all to our September 2nd meeting 2025. And I'd like for you all to make sure that your cellphones are muted or shut off. And also please stand, remove your lids and, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to thank you all for attending the meeting, September 2nd meeting for Yankton County Commission. And at this time, according to our agenda, I would please ask Pope Patty to call roll. Here.
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 Here. Ryan's online.
I am here.
Okay, at this time, I'd ask for any abstentions, any financial conflicts of interest by any of our commissioners?
I do not.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Thanks, Ryan.
I would move to approve the agenda.
Before we do that, if your chair, I think I would like to move number five to like six A. There's a lot of people here for the four H discussion. So I think let's put that in the meeting and then we'll do the emergency management discussion after that.
I would move to approve the revised agenda.
Second, motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the revised agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay. Now's the time for public comment at the beginning, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a.
Are we gonna do the rescind motion? It's the next item.
Oh, yes, yes. We got the approval agenda, next item on the agenda is to rescind the motion 2527 OC 4H.
I make a motion, we rescind motion 5227 0C 4H.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda to rescind the motion from April 19th meeting. Motion number 2527 0C 4H. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries, that motion has been rescinded. Now, at this time, I would open up for public comment. Public comment is gonna, we're gonna restrict public comment to 20 minutes this evening. If you're more than welcome to speak. However, I've, I've gotten several emails. I have no problem with the emails, reading them, I've read every one of them and I understand where you're all coming from. But if you have anything to say, please say it in a, in a, in a manner that is respectful to everyone here. And we'll allow 20 minutes for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Per county policy, the Yankton County Commissioners will not engage in conversation or make statements during public comments. I have Laura Catalic first on the list. Now, a reminder, we have 20 minutes total. So however you want to split that time up.
Turn your microphone on at the bottom.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you. I'm Laura Catalic and I grew up in 4H and my children were in 4H. I served as a 4H leader and so there's a million stories about how good it is in, in so many different ways. And I'm sure every person in here has stories that you see as supporting 4H as well. So I'll keep this super short, but I know there were letters to the editor, Casey Michael had a great letter to the editor. And I know Matt Henderson sent a great letter that's in your packets. And so if people haven't read those, those are great things to read too. But there's just an overwhelming support for 4H in Yankton and across the state. And I know that there's so many different things asking for funding. But I just really encourage each of you to know how much 4H is really valuable and a good return on, on that money. And so I just, I just hope that that is, is seen loud and clear. And I know that we just came back from the state fair last night. And it's a concern across the state. And I think that people look at Yankton sometimes when we have decisions being made. And it's a wake up call too, because if, if they're thinking, oh my gosh, is 4H ending in, in a county in, in rural South Dakota? You know, how is that gonna affect other counties and, and too? So there was a lot of people that were worried about it and watching it. So I just, I just encourage you to support financially as much as possible with the positions that are needed to maintain the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're okay.
Okay, Representative Julie Alk, longtime 4H member. I was in 4H at the time of seven years of age. Have met my husband at a 4H meeting and our children were active in 4H. My grandparents actually gave money towards the 4H grounds and supplies. So 4H is part of the fiber of Yankton County. So I thank you for rescinding your motion. And I also want to strongly encourage you to fully fund the 4H program here in Yankton County. Not only the 4H educator or professional, but also help to maintain the grounds, maintain any, any aspect of 4H that is needed. It produces the leaders, the business owners, ag producers that have created this state, this county and every single town and rural, rural part of South Dakota. We, we need to make sure that we understand how important 4H is to, especially to this county. And I don't know that I need to remind you that this commission signed a memorandum of understanding in July stating that you agreed to fund an educator and also help support and encourage 4H in Yankton County. So I am, I strongly encourage you once again, just like Laura had said, Laura Catalic had mentioned that 4H is part of every corner and every fiber of the state of South Dakota and of course here in Yankton County. So thank you for the time and I strongly encourage you to fully fund Yankton 4H in Yankton 4H clubs and of course a 4H educator. Thank you.
Carol Huber. Huber?
Hi, I'm Coral Huber. I'm a member of the Missouri Valley Master Gardeners of Yankton. And we have use of the extension building and we also host project and projects and programs with the 4H educator. We have 39 members and we provide over 780 hours of volunteer work around the Yankton community. We hold seed library classes, we sponsor community events. We provide teachers to the Boys and Girls Club for the gardening club activities, which is also supported by the 4H leader. And not having that role there would impact our ability to provide that service to that club. We donate excess produce to the community. We provide booths and education materials at farmer's market. And we fully support the 4H or the Yankton County 4H and interact with their programs in many ways. And so we encourage you to continue to provide support to the 4H. If that position goes away, we will lose our ability to serve, serve the community. We use that space for an office to host our meetings and to actually host events. And again, we also utilize the services of that person working in that 4H role. So the Missouri Valley Master Gardeners on behalf of 4H request your support.
Thank you. Next, we have Eliza Gurney.
Hi, my name's Eliza Gurney. I've been a part of Yankton 4H since I was six. I'm now 17, that's 11 years I've been a part of 4H. When I heard that you guys were thinking about not allowing us to continue 4H in Yankton, I was kind of shocked. Taking away this program, I think means taking away opportunities for a lot of kids. Not just my age, but kids younger and kids still wanting to come to the program. I've had so many opportunities to volunteer at many places and to make so many people happy. I've given meals to construction workers. I've given things to the Humane Society. I've volunteered at Majestic Bluffs Nursing Home multiple times. I've helped with the homeless shelter here in Yankton and I've done so many more things. I think without this program, a lot of the kids wouldn't have as many opportunities as I have had. And though it might be my final last couple of years, but I have younger siblings that enjoy coming and doing things with our 4H club. And I think taking away the opportunities that I had for them is taking away opportunities for not only them, but also younger kids. I am hoping that you reconsider your decision and keep 4H in Yankton and not only for the people in Yankton, but for the kids that come from outside of Yankton to the clubs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Bob?
For those that don't know me, my name is Bob Blake. I'm a full supporter of 4H. My knowledge of it basically comes to being down there on their fair at the end of summer and eating the dinner down. I've got no training in 4H and all that stuff. But as the young lady said, 4H is more than just a club for raising rabbits and chickens and showing off stuff. It builds character. So I support 4H. Now, I can't talk on what the 4H would do with their building if they took it back. But I've got a couple ideas for as far as hiring someone to run the program. Of course, I don't know what qualifications they need. But I was thinking if we had a county employee would turn around and help take over the instruction part of the deal and give them a stipend for the extra hours of work they'd have to put in on their own. You can lower the cost of what it would be to have that person there. The county, the reason I say county employee is they've all got their benefits already. You wouldn't have to supplement insurance, vacation time, whatever. Basically, you would make the position a contract position. This person wants to do the job, they sign a contract for X amount of money that you guys would determine. And they run the operation. If a county employee doesn't want to do it, I look in this room and I'm sure there's somebody here that has experience of working through the system from like they said, when they're little, all the way up to grandparents' age that could run the program that you could write a contract with them to. It would be your decision, you guys would have to set the numbers and wherever you pick out, you have to talk with them and work with them. Thank you for your time.
One more. Where we at?
And good evening and.
Good evening and thank you for letting me address you all. Instead of reading what I wrote, I'm just going to give you comments. I'm Martha Pyle. And we've been here in Yankton for 41 years. And all four of our children have gone through 4H. And I had each one of them write a little statement on how 4H had affected their lives. I thank you for rescinding your vote. And I hope that you guys fully fund 4H and keep it going in Yankton County.
Thank you. You raised your hand?
Good evening. My name is Laura Haberman. I am an educator, a principal. And just two points tonight. Didn't really expect to get up and talk, but I was moved to do so. So I am really hoping that you are able to help fund a 4H educator as a leader. 4H leader. I don't know if us leaders could do it on our own without an educator or an agent in the building. I'm sure we would try, but I don't know that it would be a quality program without a leader kind of bringing us all together, as most of us all have full-time jobs. And so I just really hope that you reconsider and help fund or fully fund 4H, the program. Also, as an educator and just a mom of kids who've been in 4H, I've been working in the program for 15 years. I think for families that grow up in a 4H setting, the kids are well-rounded. Maybe they don't necess, you know, they might be in sports, they might be in theater. But 4H really gives them a well-rounded experience to bring into their adult lives. And I think 4H really helps them to be the leaders of our future, the next upcoming leaders. And we need that here in Yankton County and to have them come back to Yankton County once they, you know, go out and graduate. There's a lot of students and young, young 4Hers that are in agriculture. And, you know, who are we in Yankton County in South Dakota? You know, an agricultural community. So I just hope that you fully fund 4H program. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Nielsen and I am the incoming leaders president of the Leaders Association. And I know you've got all the letters. I know you have phone calls. And obviously the support that we have here. However, when you guys did the flag pledge, there is something that I was missing at the end of the flag pledge or after the flag pledge, and that's the 4H pledge. And I would like to break down how I feel the 4H pledge needs to be viewed tonight. I pledge my head to clear thinking. We need to think clearly about what our conversation is, about what we are saying and how what we say is going to affect the community and our public. I pledge my heart to greater loyalty. Am I going to be loyal to what I'm going to say tonight? Am I going to be loyal to my community and to myself when I make these decisions tonight? I pledge my hands to larger service. Am I serving my community the way it needs to be served? Am I serving the people that they want to be served? I pledge my health to better living. Is my decision going to be a healthy decision for my community? Is it going to be a healthy decision for these children and all the children in Yankton County? Not just the ones that are sitting here, not just the ones that are in 4H, but the ones that are in the schools, the ones that are in the libraries when she goes or when they go to the school to do the outreach in the schools, when they go to the library to do the daycare camps and stuff like that. And we do this for my club, my community and my world to make the best better. And that is what we teach our kids. On every single meeting and on every single time when we go out to show livestock, the first thing that we do is the kids stand out there and they do the flag pledge, the 4H American pledge and the 4H pledge. And this is what keeps our kids thinking about their decisions before they go out into public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jackie Dickis. And I am a product of Yankton County 4H. I grew up in 4H. And I would like to share that I absolutely love 4H. It taught me so many things, business skills. I went on to become the collegiate South Dakota State 4H president. And I learned how to delegate a very important skill. And also I ran the snack stand at the South Dakota State Fair for two years and learned the business aspect. I believe 4H provides a safe place to get your feet wet without having a bunch of like serious consequences when you mess up. You need that safe spot. And I believe that 4H heavily influenced helping me know myself better. Before going to college, I knew what I wanted because of 4H. It showed me animal science degree is like that is, I knew myself better to know my likes and my dislikes. And so when I started college, I went all the way through and I completed in that degree because I believe 4H really is that place that is providing well-rounded people. And so in God we trust and I pray that you guys peripherally consider your decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I'm Megan Cummings. I am not originally from Yankton and I did not grow up in 4H. But we did move here and we joined 4H when we moved here because it was the best thing in 2020. Everything else was shut down. It gave me a tremendous respect for this community. And it has given me a lot of insight on who this community is from a whole bunch of different perspectives, from meeting each of you along the way, as well as all these faces that are out here. My kids are rooted in this community and they have connections no matter where we go. I was sad to see Katie go, but I'm also thankful for the amount of love and just passion she put into raising so many of these kids out here. And not having an educator means that that void is going to allow kids to slip through opportunities that my kids got. So hopefully we can figure out how to make this work. And we appreciate the time to be able to come in and make this stand. It's awesome. So hopefully we'll figure it out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to come up and speak?
Hello. Hello, my name is Dan Tackey. I'm a committee man for precinct 28 out East Yankoff. And I want to thank you for this public comment. My main concern is in my precinct, there's marijuana dispensaries, you know, which is, you know, I guess has to be. But that's the other direction I'm worried that kids go if they don't have 4H. 4H builds leaders. It teaches them how to compete. And they do it with their family. Most, most of the kids, they're doing it with their families, their teachers. And some of their projects are pretty impressive. So my concern is if we're really looking at economic development in Yankton County, rather than have people go to the marijuana dispensaries through our court system and then out to Lewis and Clark Behavior Health with social problems, we never attach the social problems to, or the social dollar bill to a lot of the stuff we do. And I think you could give a big, big plus, a lot of dollars in economic development to the social benefits that come from 4H. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Come on up.
I can lower the microphone.
I'm sure she can too.
Hi. I'm Susan Goken and I come from 4H. Our family has come from a lot of generations of 4H. My mother-in-law was, had been a leader for 50 years until her death. And I'm sure she would have kept on going. She loved 4H. She loved the kids. It's what kept her young, kept her involved, kept her going. Number one, it's a family organization. The whole family is involved. We teach our children. We work together. We solve problems together. We learn together. 4H means a lot to our community. It's our next generation of leaders, not only for the ag, but for our entire community. We have 4H members that have become the number one leaders in this community. I have sons that are leaders. They've learned from 4H. They have built their backgrounds. We sell club cabs. They farm together. We have bankers. I have animal nutrition just from our family alone. And there's a lot of these people that have been involved in 4H, that their livelihood has grown and become their careers. I have brothers that have been in 4H. And they have become leaders and involved throughout the thing. 4H not only teaches, like you think, the club projects and all that, they're six, seven, eight, nine years old. They're learning how the proper procedures of a meeting. They're learning, you know, to become involved in meetings, becoming secretaries, presidents, vice president. They're learning the electoral votes. It goes on and on. And I know you guys know all this. It's not new. I mean, they learn public speaking. You can hear from any of the teachers and all that, that children that are involved in 4H are also doing better in school. And they also do other things, you know, they're in sports, they're in band, they're in other activities. So I really do think that 4H is the background at the young. We start with the young level and it grows with them, not only just the children, but as a whole family. The family works together. It helps, it helps them all come together. And that's what I think our community needs and it goes on. I think that it would be great to keep 4H in Yankton County, not only because we think that we don't have enough money. We can come up with ideas, I believe, to support 4H and come through it. It seems like the more we work together, the more commode we can and the better we can come up with, of making this work. And I do believe that if we have an extension person or a county person who does that will also help keep us together and keep it growing. Because if we don't have them, we need someone in the office to stabilize everything and to keep the rules going and keep the business part of it going for all these young children that are out there that want to be 4H. They start as, you know, cloverbuds and go on up. And that's where we need to start with our kids is when they're young. We can't start when they're 13, 14 years old and try to teach them, you know, this and that. We need to start when they're little and get the parents involved with it. And I think that's what helps, is what helps it all. But like I said, our family has been in 4H for generations. And I have, my grandchildren are in 4H. I was in 4H. My father-in-law that were in 4H. It's a good thing.
We're at four minutes.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
And thank you.
And we are now past 20 minutes.
Okay. Okay, I'm now going to close public comment. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Tim Tanner from the South Dakota State University to come up and speak and resolve this issue.
Yeah. Welcome.
I'm primarily here as a Q and A resource for you tonight to help with any decision that you wish to make or to produce information that would help you to make the best decision possible. I think to go a little bit out of the state, as I just shared a few opening remarks, once upon a time, early in my 4H career, I had the opportunity to go to the state Capitol with our, I would say basically our county veterinarian, because he was about the only game in town at that time. And we put him through a lot of talking points before he went to speak to the Capitol. And he proceeded to listen to none of them whatsoever. And when he got to the Capitol, his message was this. I spend a lot of money fixing bad things with my tax dollars. And if you really think about it, a lot of our money as taxpayers goes to fixing bad things. Oftentimes, we don't have the resources to spend money upstream on the good things that are going to help to produce young leaders, good folks in our community, and folks that are just going to stick around and be great community servants, members at churches and all of those good things. And to me, that's what 4H is about. And I learned a good lesson that day that you don't need the talking points, you need the truth. And hopefully I can be a resource to you tonight with whatever questions you have for me. Thank you.
Tim, this MOU that's in our packet, now that, if you could explain it to us and everybody else, this would be for an SDSU employee, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it'd be an SDSU employee, pretty significant cost savings to Yankton County. And it would be a full-time educator position? Okay.
How much would that be?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
How much would that be?
Your piece for, well, it'd take a little while to get them hired. So let's say we had them in place January 1, just to make it easy math. Your piece for 2026 would be $23,050.
So I have a series of questions that I made up in the last day or two. And I heard everything that, everything that people have said here. And I believe everyone that stood up and talked and those that didn't get up and talk all agree on the same thing. And I agree that 4H has fantastic attributes for our young. So it's not about that. It's about, for me, I also have a responsibility for the people of the county to run a balanced budget. So, and I also ask myself, what things that we pay for are truly a county budget expense? The money we give to the Boys and Girls Club, is that, is that truly a county expense? I don't know. 4H is in that category. But here are the questions. How many kids attend the monthly meetings?
How many kids are enrolled?
Attend the meetings?
I don't know how I would be expected to know that.
Okay, would somebody else know it? How many attend the meetings? Was it 50 or 20 or 14 or 11? Seven clubs, okay. So you have a lot of meetings, a lot of kids there. Okay, thank you. That answers my question and it's important to me. How do you raise your operating funds? Yeah, all, all the clubs. By. And I understand that I talked to one or two banks and I understand that they also donate to 4H. Yeah, yeah.
On which in turn pays, donates back to the kids for winning certain things. They get points.
Sure.
And then that gives them scholarship money or whatever. That's the businesses in Yankton County that donate money goes to the 4H premium. That is strictly used for the kids. That does not cover one, $1 of expense through Yankton 4H.
Okay.
The premium money that businesses donate does not go to any expense for 4H.
Okay.
It helps put on achievement days. So it might go to an expense of uncovering something, but that's to help the kids. It does not pay insurance. It does not pay repairs, utilities, nothing. That's separate.
Also another aspect of the fundraising for the kids, we, you know, have a treasure. They keep track of the money. They're going to the bank with the leader, signing checks.
Let's, let's, let's make sure if we're going to speak, let's come up to the microphone. If we've got to put a line up here, let's do that and state your name for the, for the public also. So anyone that wants to speak or answer any of these questions, please come up to the, to the microphone.
Hello, Laura Haberman again. Just another aspect of the fundraising. For example, we do the Fruit Fundraiser, which is a very large fundraiser. And it's every 4H club has their own fund. And like I said, there's a treasurer. They manage the money alongside the leader. And then the club decides on if they're going to donate money towards a certain charity or do a service project that might, they might need these items for that. So there's a lot of, the students or the children have the input on where that money is used.
Okay, thank you. Next question will come back to SDSU. By the way, I graduated from there too, so.
Congratulations.
I like the school. My question is, and, and Mrs. Alk referred to the memo of understanding that we signed in July. And I assume it's July of this year that she's talking about. Are you aware of that memo? Okay. And so my understanding was that memo was maybe signed several years ago?
You re-sign it each year to re, on an annual basis?
Okay. Yeah, explains it then. Thank you. Because if, if I'd known about that, and John, I, I don't know if you signed it, knew about it or, or what?
Sheriff and signed it.
Who does?
I signed it. I signed it.
I, I would, would add some questions, so. I wouldn't have voted no properly. What are your organizational plans to improve the operation of 4H?
Are you talking on the operations side or programming involvement? What are you thinking?
Everything, operations, business, programming. What, what are the kids, I, I heard what the kids are learning from you guys. And they, they truly learned a great amount of stuff.
Well, I will say this first of all, and I know Katie's here, and I'm not just saying this because she's here. But as a one-woman band, from a staffing perspective for quite some time now, she, she was absolutely knocking it out of the park when she resigned. Just from a comparison standpoint, across the state, we reached 26% of the youth in South Dakota. Here in Yankton County, by herself, with all these volunteer supporters, of course, she was reaching 31% last year. That's that's very hard to do and very hard to improve on. So you're right, the, the next person coming in the door will have their work cut out for them. That being said, we've put in a lot of effort at SDSU over the last three years to improve our onboarding process, to improve our mentoring process, to improve our coaching. Because we recognize that typically a young professional, not always, but a young professional coming in needs that support so that we can help them to embed in their communities quickly, garner the support of their volunteers and move things forward as best as possible. And the great news is that there are already established school partnerships in this community. And that's the number one way for growth. And sometimes trying to build that from scratch is the hardest thing we face. And I think if we can keep the momentum going, we won't have to rebuild much. We can just pick up where Katie left off.
From the, from the county commission's standpoint, we probably spent 10 times at least as much time discussing this project, this 4H issue, as we have on detention. Because detention runs, what?
550 bucks a day?
550, per kid, per day. And 4H is, helps us with that. We know that. So we understand the value. The state and the federal people dictate, we'll spend the money on detention. We don't have a choice. That, that gets spent. And there's a number of those items in our budget that we can't change. So we're looking at a shortfall in budget, which I think we are. We have to figure out how we're going to pay the bills. And that's kind of where we're at. So that's all the questions I had.
Thank you.
So, so Tim, the question I have is this, this new memorandum of understanding is going to, if we agree to sign this, your, your SDSU is going to put an ad in the paper tomorrow. Maybe not tomorrow, but to hire a person that's going to be staffed in Yankton County.
Correct.
So that being the case, I have quiet in the audience. So that being the case, I just want to stand up and I'm going to make a couple of comments, okay? To all of you people out there. So in 2023, a gentleman from SDSU came to Yankton County and they actually broke the MOU stating the fact that they were no longer going to support Yankton County with a 4H person or funding. Now, he told us point blank at that podium that anytime Katie or Danielle want to make a call to him, that he would have an answer for them. Okay? I just want to make that clear, that in 2023, South Dakota State University came to us, the Yankton County Commission, and broke the same MOU that we just broke two weeks ago, three weeks ago. Okay? We're trying to fix this tonight. We're going to fix this tonight. Also, another point I want to make is I don't know how many of you watch the legislative sessions that go on in peer. And this past session, I seen one of our legislators stand up and Yankton, not, sorry. Counties in this state have to cut their funding. We cannot support them anymore. Okay? There's two legislators sitting in this room. One legislator sitting in this room that's seen that happen. The other one didn't see it, probably heard about it, okay? In the last three years since I've been county commissioner, I have watched every legislative session that I could get on the internet. I have not seen one legislator in the state of South Dakota bring a bill to the legislative session to support 4H in the state of South Dakota. Now, they give all this, they give all this money to SDSU, to the Board of Regents there. But how much of that is dedicated by the legislature to support 4H in the state of South Dakota? I support 4H in the state of South Dakota 100%. I grew up in 4H. I went to the Hutchinson County Fair every year that I was eligible to go there. I raised hogs with my father and my mother, and my mother was a 4H leader. You don't know how much it hurt me when whoever was out there was putting on Facebook that Yankton County Commissioners don't support 4H. It hurt me deeply. And that's why we're sitting here tonight. That's why we opened, I opened the meeting to rescind the, the, the motion that was made in, on August 19th. But I want you to all understand that just like Don said, we are mandated to spend 80% of our funding, your property tax dollars, that the county actually gets. We're mandated by the state of South Dakota, the legislators that are sitting in this room tonight and every other legislator in the state of South Dakota, to spend 80% of our budget on mandated funds, mandated issues by this legislation, state of South Dakota. Now, in order to support you folks out there, we asked Mr. Tanner to come up with a plan to help us out. He has with this new memorandum, okay? I, I just, I, I can't, I can't specify it enough that it pains me to read the, and, and I appreciate all the emails that I got over the last two or three weeks of, of how you folks support 4H. I can't tell you enough that I support it just as much, and if not more than you did. Do. So therefore, I appreciate every one of you coming this evening, but I would, I would, I don't know how I want to say this. I would recommend for every one of you to speak to our legislators in Yankton County District 18 and have them go to work and sponsor a bill to help the counties in Yankton, in South Dakota, to support what you're here to support tonight. And, and that's a region, that's a reason why I am actually running for the House of Representatives, because I will go to peer and I will sponsor a bill for, just for this reason right here, that you people are here to help support, get the state money. The state's got $63 million in reserve and they can't come up with a couple of million dollars to help support 4H in the state of South Dakota. Pretty lame of my, my, my thought. I'm going to jump off of my soapbox now and we'll move on to ask for a motion to support this member.
Motion to approve the MOU with SDSU in Yankton County.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan. I have a second by Wanda to approve the signing of the memorandum, MOU for SDSU.
I have something for further discussion. And I'd just like to thank everybody for coming here. And we, we haven't had anybody in 4H come and speak to us for quite a while. And I appreciate you guys coming and reaching out. And it's difficult for us to make these decisions when we have no public input. I, nobody shows up to our budget meetings and tells us their priority. You know, there wasn't anybody at our last meeting telling us any, anything. What we do here over and over again is cut everything you can. And those people are very loud. And so I just appreciate you being here and telling us, we work for you guys. And, and thank you for the public input.
Well, I just want to add one short thing. I got from a, from a close friend, I got a page and a half, a letter on all of the things that the Master Gardeners Club does in the, in the community and how they use that facility and, and, and work with 4H on their programs. And I, that opened my, my mind to other things that either are being used or could be used in conjunction to make things work better financially for everyone.
Sorry, I didn't, I'm not interrupting.
No.
I'm, I'm wondering if there's maybe just a little bit of, and maybe you can help me, Tim, a little bit of misunderstanding. Katie's position was as the 4H coordinator, which directs just 4H, basically. So she worked and, and did things with the 4H program and outreach with the 4H program. And I think what, what we're talking about hiring is an extension agent, correct?
Same, that's the old title, educator now, same thing.
But wasn't it kind of a little bit of a different, because I guess that's where I was maybe misunderstanding. Katie's position was the 4H coordinator or the 4H youth coordinator. And an extension agent was all over, was the person that took care of all of the extension personnel things, not just the 4H, but they are the ones that did the applicator's test. They're the ones that did, you know, that type of stuff.
That was Danielle.
Right. And so that was, that was the more, you know, extended from what Katie's position was. I think if I'm understanding things correctly.
Is that accurate, Tim?
I'm supposed to go to the mic, sorry. So it's pretty common for 4H offices across the state to continue to serve some of those legacy extension functions that went away in 2011 when there was a big legislature cut and they had a big reorg here in South Dakota. And a lot of the, well, all the other pieces beyond 4H within cooperative extension regionalized. So folks from here might go to Sioux Falls, for example, in order to receive some of those services or to go to their outreach events. But the 4H educators and a lot of county offices do what has been shared here already, which is out west, they'll do some of that drought water, drought water testing. And throughout the state, they do the pesticide applicator testing. And so you're right, we've already heard Master Gardeners discuss this evening as far as providing them resources and usually a facility, an organization, those types of things as well. So there is a little piece of their job that is beyond 4H. But I would say that for most counties, it's 95 to 96% is a pure-blooded, you know, 4H role.
Tim, you wouldn't see any issues then if somebody needed an applicator test for this position to, to do that?
No, that's, that's commonly done.
Great.
That's commonly done, presuming it's not, you know, 500 people all of a sudden because you bring in some sort of
400s find them.
Yeah. It's manageable. That's, that's pretty common across the state.
And, you know, we look forward to open communication. And one of the requests I'll do when we hire this is have them come in and give us quarterly reports, like a lot of departments do. And that's, that's something I think would open up communication and we see that person. And then it's also great during the quarterly reports to speak to the community on all the great things that are happening. And I think it'll be a possibility.
I agree.
Smoke. Any further discussion? Ryan, did you, did you want to say something, Ryan?
I did, yes. One, I wanted to correct one thing that you said, that SDSU broke the MOU. That's not a, that wasn't the case. This MOU is signed every year. And in, and in the past, they changed it. They didn't break an MOU. They just changed it. And at that time, I do remember that meeting. And at that time, I do remember that meeting and that was because Yankton County had a strong program and in their, in their efforts to maintain services across the state, that was the MOU they offered and was passed. This new, this new MOU that we are receiving tonight is only because another county is going to the option that Yankton previously worked under. And so this is an opportunity that really just arose. And so we're very fortunate that we have this opportunity with SDSU to move into this new agreement. And so I really want to thank, uh, Tim for, uh, really being, uh, responsive here with everything. So. Um, so I'm really looking forward to trying to, you know, just as the 4H sir said, we need to make the best better. Um, the biggest thing to improve this program is we need to find stability again. We already cut the budget 30% in the last round. We will probably be talking about this budget again on September 5th. Um, because this changes a lot of things in that budget. But we cut this 4H budget by 30%. And then we still went after it. We haven't done that with any of the other budgets. I really feel it's time to get off the soapboxes and we need to start making solutions. If we want to be serious about making cuts, then we need to make cuts as commissioners. And we need to really start looking at this budget process in seriousness and not just making soapbox statements. So with that, I will, uh, get off my soapbox and, uh, let this vote go forward.
You good?
I am.
Yep.
So we're going to vote?
At this, at this time, um,
Let's vote.
We'll come. I have a motion and a second to sign the new MOU for, with SDSU in the state of South Dakota. Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody for coming and your input.
Tim, when, uh,
Important work, communications.
When do you think that the position will be filled? I know you have no idea, but. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
John, we're done.
Randy Frank, you just have a question. Now you signed the MOU, which brings us an educator with your funding and that stuff, but there's no mention anywhere here about funding the 4H program yet. Is that going on as usual?
Our budget will be set September 5th.
So that's yet to be determined.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Encourage you guys all to attend the budget meeting. What time is it? February or September?
September 5th.
Some 4:00. 1300. Here, yep. Uh, September.
September 5 at 1 o'clock.
1 o'clock, we're going to be going through, we're going to have the state auditor come and go through the budget with us and it's, they're going to be an eye opening experience for everybody. So encourage you guys to attend. It's an open meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Right here.
Yep. Do we want to? Guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We got.
I, I do have one thing else. I want to thank Tim Tanner for, for being here and, uh, explaining what's going on in the 4H. Thanks, Tim. Hey. I think we're going to take a five minute break just to let everyone that wants to leave clear out. And if you want to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome.
Look forward to working with you. Any chance?
This is White.
Yeah, just so you're aware of it. Yes, not to make fun of everybody.
What?
We're gonna have to happen again, so we're gonna be a part of it. Hopefully, hopefully, we can make it all work out.
This is, this is the man.
Yeah, I'm glad if Spilot could have taken it.
We'll have to get him.
What's that? I did.
We're going.
Good.
Motion to wait, get a wait for better.
I'd move to go back into regular session.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't leave regular.
I don't care, we're doing it anyway.
I think so.
It says it on the thing, but.
Yes.
But it, then let's not do it.
We on this OEM agreement with Bon Home County?
Yeah, I can cross it off six and we're on six A.
Gary, close that door, would you?
Nobody can get back in.
Too bad, they'll knock.
Is it not locked? Is it need to be here? I'll go unlock. Can you unlock it with your card?
Yeah.
Because we don't want to prevent Pete Walker coming in.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
See, look what Paul can do. That's, he's that, he is that good. He is that good.
Hello?
Um, and.
Hey, those tomatoes were wonderful.
And Mr. Chair, just to point out where I'd like to recognize our fellow county commissioner from Bon Home, so thank you for attending us.
I think he wants to speak tonight.
Oh, he's got, he's gonna get it, Jim.
He's, yeah.
What is? So what are we doing first?
Let's do the agreement.
Okay, so our LAMP, there's the agreement. Well, right, we're gonna talk a little bit about the Bon Home County. Right, but this agreement is our LAMPG, our state contract, where we get state dollars back for our salaries every year. It's something you guys sign every year. Contracts basically are signed other than the percentage of what they're paying. I mean, that would be.
So that's what you handed out here?
Okay, got it. It's a, this is, and I can pass this around, the signature page is here.
Yeah.
But what this here, what this here is, is just telling us that they'll pay up to 50% of our salaries through the fiscal year of 2026. As long as we provide all the requirements for the LAMPG and all that stuff. Nothing's changed, no more extra duties, but like I said, the things that they have taken down is they've cut back on our actual, what they're giving us for our salaries.
It's gone to 50% to 35%?
Thirty-five percent.
So, yeah, I mean, in.
Yeah, so.
Would you say 35% for Yankton County and 35% for Bonham County?
No, we'll talk about, that's gonna be a stickler here.
It's even worse.
It's worse.
It's worse than.
This is, this, this contract here is for just Yankton County.
I'd, I'd move approval of the.
That wasn't.
This contract?
It isn't, yeah.
I didn't know you said that.
Let's do that next meeting.
Okay.
How, how soon does that happen?
September seventh.
September seventh, we can do it on the sale.
Sign it.
We'll just bring it back in, yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, let's put it on the budget agenda that's coming up in a couple of days, and we'll just take care of it there.
No, that's fine.
The only thing I want, I want Rob to read through it, so that if I sign it, I'm not gonna get chastised halfway through it.
Yeah, and one of the questions that we had in this, when we go, and I'll just, I'll go on to the next thing, is on the cover sheet from the, the Director of Emergency Management from Pier Tina Tissie, she says that, you know, here's your blah, blah, blah agreement with 50% reimbursement. It's right in her letterhead, but you go into like page eight and it's cut down and highlighted, taking it down to 35%. So they didn't even, couldn't, couldn't even take the 50% off the cover page, they had to leave it.
Paul, like, so did they give a reasoning for that?
Well, they're claiming it's the Elon Doge cuts.
Didn't our state have so much money two years ago, they lowered property taxes from 4.5 to 4.3, and then now we don't have any money and the counties gets?
Well, but the, I mean, I don't know how much the state got. State gets a bunch of money because they got a lot of state employees.
If it's anything like our road money, they take 95% of it and then we get chrome, so I'm sure that's.
Concept, but that's what this contract's about again, so.
So we'll do that.
Well, I already put that in the paper, I'll check with them.
Okay, that's fine.
If not, it'll have to be the 16th.
That, that, that's fine.
We can, uh, Rob, could we add that to the agenda on?
I said.
For the fifth.
Yes, for Friday.
The agenda.
I don't think we have enough days, do we?
Well, Paul's second.
Let's just wait till the 16th. I'll just call state and say, hey, we had a big, big meeting and didn't get to this topic tonight.
You'll be able to talk about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, okay. So then the next thing I got in your, when I handed out to you guys is a, uh, I would, Dan reached out to me talking, and it's been talked about at several department head meetings of, of counties working together and how they can help out. So Dan asked me to put something together. I reached out to a couple of the other counties that actually have more than one county as an EM, uh, and they gave me a contract, I kind of put some numbers together, uh, and shot it over to Dan and to John has a copy, but the idea behind it was now is to discuss it, to make sure that, uh, uh, this is what we want to do. Uh, the one thing, and I, and I've sent copies over and there's other letterhead, the, the, the thing is, the, is that there's a contract also, this is what Bon Home's gonna have to sign, that's for non-participating, because the state claims that if we contract with Bon Home County, we can't get any of that federal money, that 50% from Bon Home County to support their salaries, because we're contracting with them, so.
Does it, it, it makes totally no sense that we're, we're working together with a neighboring county, reduces costs, and then, then the state takes away even more money because we're being more efficient?
So anyway, that, and that, but in that contract, there is still, you've got it there, it's the one that's got the big South Dakota circle.
Yeah.
Uh, implemented on page two is the requirement, South Dakota statute states, every county has to have an emergency manager. And then under that, here are your duties. So there's still gonna be a certain amount of work that's gotta be done over there, and I and Aaron, Aaron and I sat down and we all agreed that we, we have no problem and we're kind of actually got a lot of phone calls from folks in Bon Home County. Uh, they're excited that we're coming over, things going on, uh, so we have no problem doing it. Yeah, it's gonna be some extra. Not that we have extra, well, like I said, we don't sit around, don't do nothing, but we can make it work based on what the hours we got here. The one question that I have, I talked to Dan and John about this before, is that beings that we're taking on a little bit more responsibility, I am asking for a little bit of a stipend for Aaron and myself, because we're taking on the extra work for Bon Home County. And that money could come from the 26,000, did I say that right? That we have asked Bon Home County to pay Yankton County for our services. So it really wouldn't be any more taxpayer money expenses to, for our folks, but we could use some of that. And then it's a one-year contract, and then we'd have to go back and maybe renegotiate, uh, look at it, whatever, maybe ask for a buck more or something like, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Brett, a question for you, uh, do you think that that would be something we could work out with, with Bon Home, just like a small stipend maybe coming from Bon Home, not, not an employee or something, but because I, I kind of hear what he's saying. And initially setting this up in particular, there's gonna be a lot of trips, there's gonna be a lot of paperwork, I think in the years following it'll go down, is, you think there's any wiggle room there? I'm not.
I guess.
Brett, would you please?
Yeah, I apologize, yeah, I, you know, I would have to talk to the other commissioners down there, I guess. I'm, I'm really in full support of this, I.
Yeah, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
On Paul's behalf, like I, I had one, I, I had one individual from fire department say if it costs us more money, it's worth bringing Paul in.
Okay, I take that as a.
So, but, so, yeah, I, I guess, you know, that's just something we would have to discuss, I think coming from us, we all understand, like, you know, this first year, we're gonna see how it goes, get going, and then, you know.
I think this will be more work and then once you get in the rhythm, it'll be down.
And like, you, you know, I think we're hoping maybe this can kind of be the beginning of just more things that we can work together on, right? Because like you touched on, the, the state cracks out on us, but we don't see any more dollars ever, so, yeah.
And I think the counties, we're gonna have to start working together like this, or we're not gonna survive, quite frankly, so.
Question, will it, uh, will it impact, uh, whether, whether you can apply to both counties for, for the grants, uh, you get a lot of grants? You know, does, does it impact?
So I've actually been approached, uh, the, I got a call from the state, right now Bon Home County is working on a pre-disaster mitigation plan, as so are we, we are getting grant money to do that. They wanted to know if we wanted to join them, and I said no. And I didn't ask anybody from Bon Home, but the reason I said no is, is that if we combine them, that's less money. Our plans are gonna be one that may not work here, it'll work here in Yankton, but won't work in Bon Home, so we need to keep that kind of stuff separated, and so that we can apply for grants for each county, so that they, you know, we're not taking money from us, or they're not taking money.
Yeah.
Or we're not, it needs to stay separate, but yet we'll work together to, uh, uh, like the Homeland Security Grants. They should be able to apply for their own grants, it shouldn't be two counties fighting over one set of pool of money.
But you know how, you know how it will be, they'll say it's all going to the.
No, no, actually, we've already talked, a lot of the fire departments on this, and they're gonna work on that, they have their own committees that rank their own grants. Even though we'll oversee them, they're deciding what's going on.
Yeah.
That's just, that's what we do here. But I don't want to get blamed for, I didn't give Westerville something because I'm, I'm Lester, you know, I don't want that, so we let the people on the committee make the votes.
I'm not worried about you, I'm worried about other people.
No, I understand, but we're, we're keeping them grouped separately, because I think we would get more money for it. So like I said, this agreement needs to be, I'm not asking for a signature tonight, or, or it's your guys' decision.
I say, I say, Brett, could we get, you know, if we approve this tonight, you know, we're still gonna work with you guys on the final answer, I mean, you go back to your, how, how do you want to do this? How do you want to move forward? Because I mean.
This, this is not gonna go into effect till January 1st, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I guess, you know, we kind of depend on what exact stipend dollars you're looking at, I guess, because.
How about, how about this, let's, uh, let's get, get your number and we'll, we'll talk to Paul together, and then you go back to your commission and, because I, I think we're all, we're almost, we're 99% there, I think we just need a little tweak to do that, would that work for you?
Yeah, for me, I'll do whatever we can, like I said.
Let's get, get his number and, and I think get mine and we'll, and we'll come back and propose, does that sound?
Absolutely in favor of me, if you can save money and still serve the customer.
Oh.
That, that's, that's the important service, I got the server and I customers.
And the guest rooms, from our standpoint, you know, I think there's other positions that we talked about, we all look at, and I explore other options with that right now, but I guess, I think, you know, for me, well, this all started, this wasn't really an option, and then it kind of came up, and it, and I, I really think like this is just kind of kind of the beginning of, you know, a lot of different things that we're gonna have to work with going, going forward, you know, I mean, because but we're, we're not, uh, we're not probably in the money situation that a lot of counties are right now, but, uh, you know, our, we're not, we have no growth either, right? So I mean, at the end of the day, we still have to keep giving races and equipment, that's our thing, because they're trying to get, you know, and maybe for, you know, for a relationship with y'all going forward, where, you know, where we're here ready, so.
Exactly, I think that's great.
I, I, I'd have to tell you that I, I think it would be pretty difficult to make, uh, 48 trips over and back for 2,500 bucks.
Yeah.
When you, when you pay what, 55 cents a mile, what would it be now?
60 bucks.
65 cents a mile.
Plus time and, yeah, and, and that could be something where, you know, online Zoom meetings, things of that nature, it probably would be a big thought savings too, but.
So I guess as far as you're talking about trips, what are you referring to?
Uh, he said, in, in the agreement, it says that.
Four trips per month.
Four trips per month, and if that's, you know, that, is that four trips, is that Paul and Aaron going four times, or is it Aaron going four times? You know, so.
And a lot of that's gonna, it could be up too.
Yeah.
Then you got, you have a pickup.
Right. So we have a county.
Not taking their.
Yeah.
Privacy.
Yeah, so there will be no mileage.
But it's.
And still, there's costs.
There are costs, it's too hard.
To the county, there's still a cost on our side.
So.
Exactly.
So here's, here's what I would propose, I would say, I'll get with, um, these guys and we'll fine tune this, I think we're 99% there, and you're gonna bring it to Bon Home and, and then have, uh, or, or how do you want to do this? We, we approve it and then it goes to them?
Well, I think, I think, talk to, talk to Brett.
Yeah.
Get a number for stipend or whatever, whatever, whatever everybody agrees on.
Okay.
They've, they've, they've already agreed to the, to what we had proposed, but now we wanna, but now we wanna audit or.
Okay.
Edit that.
Okay, we'll do that and then we'll re-present, and then I'll, I'll get your number, get my, just your number.
And we'll move forward.
That you.
Anyway, we're, like I said, we're, we're, we're all game, we're kind of excited about it, you know, with that, just about our relationship, because we do so much with the counties also, so.
Yep.
Looking for a smile on Aaron's face also.
Oh, Aaron did show up.
Aaron, do you want to come up and speak? Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Thanks, thank you guys.
All right. Thanks, Paul.
The resolution, the policy resolution to double chip seal county roads, and I can read that? Do I have that?
Um, the, the only thing I had on the policy I, I would like to change, uh, is it said, if said amount is, and this is in the bottom paragraph, if said amount is less than yada yada, the highway superintendent shall submit such a plan to the county commission for approval, I would maybe change that shall to a may, because there very well could be some roads that meet this criteria that, you know, maybe we.
That couldn't wait two weeks?
Or, or maybe they're gonna wait a couple of years or, or something, I guess 494 is a great example, that road might meet this criteria, but you know, there was gonna be major construction on it, so we delayed that.
We have to finance it all upfront. There's a cost on, on financing that, I think that'll be taken into the the, uh, ratio that.
Right, yeah, yes, the ROI on the, on the maintenance and the.
I just don't, I just don't like the resolution saying we absolutely have to do it.
Yeah.
There, I don't think, otherwise it's great, like it's real good.
You want to change that shall to may?
Can we, can we just make a motion and approve it with that change? All right.
I think the one thing, if I can speak.
Certainly.
Yeah, the one thing, uh, we talked about previously in this too, was, um, just having a traffic count study done as well, um, to sort of back up the, uh, the findings, and I think that's a good idea to do if we're going to go down this path, is that we also understand that what the traffic is on the roads that we are going to start to improve like this.
How, how would you reincorporate that into this resolution, though, just stating a fact that the traffic count needs to be done, or uh, a number of traffic needs to be maintained, or I, I guess I'm in agreement that there should be a traffic count done, and I think, I think that Mike or whoever the highway superintendent would, would do that, being we have traffic count machines now.
Yeah, yeah, it.
And that, and that could be, that could be in the proposal that he comes, when he comes to the county commission for approval.
How about winter months over the previous five years to maintain specific identified road surfaces, comma, and traffic counts?
You know, maybe it doesn't need to be in the resolution so much as just as a guidance behind this resolution for the, for the highway superintendent, because it's part of that whole, uh, what's your numbers and why, why do the numbers actually add up to being like that it's more cost effective to improve the road?
Okay.
So, so I understand this, uh, if we have a single person that lives two miles down a road, and it's determined by Mike that the expense of grading that, whether it's a township or county road, probably make a difference, but the expense of grading and taking care of it, if that's greater than is that, is that right, am I?
Yes, greater than the cost.
Than the cost.
To double chip seal or mag water, I guess, I guess.
Every road in the county lying for it.
But it's only the highway superintendent's call, it's not. Rich can't, unless Rich wants to come up with a million dollars to do his road.
Hey, you gotta buy a ticket.
No, no.
Buy two.
Hold it now, uh, uh, why does he have to go out with a million dollars?
Because he's got to sign an agreement to make sure that the ROI within the five-year period is gonna cover the expense of, of double chip sealing that road.
So at the end of five years, we come to him and say, you owe us $680,000.
No, he's got to sign the agreement that he's gonna pay that upfront, just like these, these folks are paying $200 a year, or being assessed $200 a year for five years. And, and that makes, that makes the ROI affordable to the county, so that in five years that road is paid for, the double chip seal is paid for.
But the commission before you guys ma, uh, determined that our road wasn't, I don't know, repairable, you know? So I did not live on a dirt road before I bought my house. I did not build my house, it sits where it sits for 100 years. The people on 294th, from my understanding, wasn't me, gave up some of their property to have that paid. I don't know, that's what I heard, so I'm different. The county rounded me up. People who live on dirt roads, they aren't being used as much as 294th. But when it got watered down, excellent, dust, it was gone, I could sit in my yard, I'm not flipping people off. Dust me out.
As much or at all?
At all, at all, I've been waving.
Okay.
I'm different, the county grounded up. And I don't want to be on a dirt road.
Mr. Chair, I guess, what, do we want to make these changes, or do we need this done tonight, or what?
I'd like to, I'd like to approve the resolution, and the resolution actually states also that the 72 signatures that we have that are gonna uh, be assessed the $200, so I'd like to get that done tonight, if we can.
Yeah.
Pass this with the changes from shall to may and any other changes?
I think Wanda's gonna make a motion.
Say if another, somebody else wants a road done, are they gonna pay $200 too?
They're gonna pay whatever the, whatever the formula.
Think they should put an amount in there, should they?
It's not in here, is it?
It's not in this motion.
But you said you want.
Well, do we need a resolution for the other one also, or just, they're gonna, this is just an agreement, they've signed the letter. Okay. Okay, okay, so then skip the other resolution part.
I think Wanda was gonna.
I would have a motion to approve this resolution.
I'd move to approve the resolution with the apparent change of that shall shall become may.
You second?
I guess I'll second that. I was waiting for Don, but.
Have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve this resolution for the formula and the process in moving forward in the future with double chip sealing or chip sealing any roads to make sure that, uh, cost is not gonna cost the county anymore than what we can save on maintenance.
And it's not something we have to do, it's just, if it makes financial sense, then we do.
Correct. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Is that two nays?
Ryan said yay, didn't he?
Ryan said aye, but he might have meant nay, I don't know.
Ryan, are you a yay or a nay?
A yay.
Motion carries.
I'd move to approve the August 19, 20, 25 minutes.
Yes. Wanda, you did what now?
I moved to approve the August 19, 20, 25 minutes, Don said.
Motion by Wanda, second by Don to approve the August 19 minutes, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
I'd move to approve the claims.
Second.
Motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the claims. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
I'd move to approve the August 20, 25 payroll.
Second.
And a motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve August 20, 25 payroll. Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Public comment, final once and for all, final comment, public comment, anyone?
Two in one meeting, Bob.
Bob?
That, that's a new record, I think.
First of all, I want to thank the commission for having that gentleman down here to talk to, the 4H group and all that stuff, I would have preferred if you had led off with him, in which case I would not have had to come up here in my first public comment and look like an idiot. The only thing I'm thinking of, you're working on the budget right now, uh, I think while you're looking on this budget, I would start looking at the finances or the detention center, juvenile detention center, if you're talking about building. Uh, because as time goes on, everything gets more expensive. You've already had meetings, you've had, uh, people that know stuff, look at the building and stuff. I'd like to suggest that you not put that on the back burner, but keep it moving. Uh, who knows, maybe get the guy to finance the jail in the first place. Maybe they'll extend their loan to finance the juvenile detention center, it's just, hey, you don't ask, you don't find out, right?
Exactly.
Thank you.
I think they've talked, already talked with the city.
Mr. Chairman, point of order quick, I'd just like to recognize our planning commissioner, Nick Huber in the back there, thank you for your service to the county.
Hi, Nick.
Hi, Nick.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, that's a tough job.
Had an interesting meeting last week, a couple of weeks ago. Any commissioner updates?
We got a convention coming up next week, if you can attend, be great.
That's in Pier?
In Pier.
Don, you got anything to up, update us with? Wanda?
Nada.
Ryan?
I do not have anything significant tonight.
Just the budget meeting on the 5th, this next big thing we got, so.
We actually have things for the executive session, or no?
Don't we, Gary, don't we have something for executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
I, I, I see heads shaking in the no fashion.
Yeah, I got, I got a motion by Dan to.
Second.
Adjourn, second by Wanda. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned, thank you all for coming.
Bye.